We're now live on Channel Eight in YouTube.
Standing, thank you, Dana. Good evening, time is now six thirty PM, I'm Vice Chairman Tim Poe, I'd like to call the Select Board Business Meeting to order on this twenty-third day of March twenty twenty-two. Please rise and join me in for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, and that has been just for all.
Thank you, before we begin, I'd like to state for the record, we're not only being streamed live on TCTV cable, Channel Eight, and our YouTube web platform, but this evening's recording will be available for later viewing on our YouTube channel. We have the following board members, staff, and expected guests. Board Member Bennett, Board Member Griffiths, Board Member Richards, myself, here live and in person, and Chairman Curry is joining us remotely, as he's out of town on a business trip right now, but he's carved out some time to be with us. We also have some new employees that'll be introduced, and a presentation coming to us for the Main Street Bridge Repair Update. As always, our agenda for the evening has been set no later than forty-eight hours out by law, publicly available at the official town source for information, TempletonMA.gov. Although I have discretion as Chair to add or remove from the agenda, it has been set to allow for time, personnel resources, and public awareness. Reserve the right to remove agenda items around the best fit our business and guests, thank you. Okay, moving into our agenda, item three. Approval of meeting minutes, approval of many prior meetings. We have in our packets, meeting minutes from three nine, three twelve, and three sixteen, twenty twenty-two.
Mr. Chair, one correction, Mr. Vice Chair. On the meeting, in the meeting minutes for three twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, just a note that Noel Francis is, Noel's name is N O W E L L, just the spelling.
For which state is that?
March twenty, oh, that's tonight, sorry, March twelve, twenty twenty-three, Saturday, when the advisory committee was going to start. Noel Francis is in our W P.
Correction on Mr. Francis's name, correct spelling, thank you for that. Any other comments from the board?
Um, also, sorry, I just looked at my notes, the police department. It says, uh, the state says there needs to be three officers per thousand, but when I looked over the notes that I had from the budget meeting, it was three point five per one thousand.
And that is from Saturday the twelfth?
Yes, sir.
Any other errors or missions or corrections required?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
I make a motion to accept the minutes with amendments for March ninth, twelfth, and sixteenth, as amended and presented.
I have a motion on the floor with amendments as presented to approve the meeting minutes, do I hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion approved and seconded, or is there any discussion? We'll call again, is there any discussion?
Mr. Vice Chair, I'm only going to recruise myself from three twelve to two, otherwise, so, do I just say standing on those particular meetings?
Okay, understood, very good, and hearing no further, we will call for the vote. But we will, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes, excluding three twelve twenty-two.
Duly noted, and I vote yes as well. Mr. Curry, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. We have no executive session minutes to go through, moving along, citizen input. No citizen input, no. New business. Introduction of town, new town employees. Don't see Jackie with us, or Linda Arelly, from the Templeton Senior Center staff. Jackie is remote, Jackie, I so apologize.
That's okay, Tim.
Will Linda be joining us this evening?
Unfortunately, she will not, I apologize, but we'll work hard to get her on your April sixth meeting.
Very well, thank you. And representing the DPW, Mr. Sosik.
Yeah, I'd like to acknowledge the HESI I O B, Scott Kendall, Scott's gonna be replacing retired David Smart at the DPW, he comes from Denver DPW, lives in town, so he's a great asset, asset, and experience.
Are we getting some big shoes to put?
Yeah.
Welcome to the team.
Are you related to Dick?
And representing the fire department. Chief.
Good evening, I'd like to introduce Nate Baldwin, newest firefighter, full-time, he he's worked locally for a while, he actually comes with us, he is paramedic certified, and he is local certified for fire department. There's no reason, we do not need to send him to the academy, he has been a paramedic now for a little over two years, and graduated one of the top in his class, first year of Mount Wachusett Community College Paramedic Program locally, that our captain late men happens to run. He's already hit the ground running, and he's doing a great job for us.
Awesome.
Standing.
Welcome aboard, next.
Thanks, Chief, for that great introduction.
Any other new employees that did not make the list?
That is it, okay, that is it.
Okay, next on our agenda, appointments, Board of Registars, Karen Getrow, Sheila Tomlin.
Nick Norman.
See, they need to attack it to memorandum from the town clerk, where she was asked to select where they could appoint. You just mentioned.
This, this letter was dated March fifteenth, and again, Karen Getrow, Sheila Tomlin requested to select, select for to appoint the following individuals, Karen through twenty twenty-four, Sheila through twenty twenty-five, and that was submitted to us through the town clerk's office. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Co-Chair, I move to appoint to the Board of Registars Karen Gotrow through April thirty, twenty twenty-four, and Sheila Tomlin through April thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion on the floor, and a second, any discussion? Just have one quick item, I'm pleased to see we have folks stepping up and looking to fill some of the vacant positions on the various boards, committees, commissions around town, and that's always a great thing. Any further discussions from the board? Hearing that, we'll call for the vote, just a minute, yes? Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next on our agenda, present, agenda, presentation, the Main Street Bridge Rehabilitation and Water Main Replacement Alternative Analysis.
We have our engineers here that have been working on this report, coming back, I mean, coming in front of us, these few months ago, roughly.
Just around Halloween, because I remember some Halloween discussions.
And Andrea and Jeff were working closely with the town, partner heads, and, and the water department, so happens, I know Andrea has some of the documents that are included in your packet, but in a formal binder, if you will. For that, so I'll just let them have some time to get situated, Andrea came just in time, so I could tell Jeff was getting worried, he was going to start the report.
Yeah, so these are the final copies, we had previously sent you an electronic copy in your agenda packet, yeah, so we have printed final documents for you, and this includes the Mast D O T reports as well as, I think that was the only information that was. Thank you, I emailed you the presentation.
It's awesome.
It's awesome, great.
Make a great job, this is a lot of detail.
We also have here, Mr. Sosik, from our DPW Department of water and department that are working on this project.
Hey.
Can you start to share that?
You'll see it on that TV. Okay, so, we're here tonight to just discuss the results of the alternatives analysis, so we did look at bridge rehabilitation and the water main replacement, so we considered these two, and so we'll just go through everything. And you can advance the slides, please. Um, just so you know, we conducted five site visits, so Jeff and I, we did a walkthrough after our kickoff meeting with the town, that was on November eighth, so it was just a cursory review of location adjacent facilities, just to get an idea of the bridge, the location of the bridge, and what the relationship with the water main. And then I came on site November sixteenth and conducted a, an assessment of the bridge with another engineer, and the results of that assessment are provided within the report. We did subsurface condition assessment, so we took some geotechnical borings on these two days in December the third and the sixth, and we also conducted a wetland delineation on December twenty-third. And then lastly, we did a hazardous materials assessment on January fifth, all of these were conducted by Ty and Bond, we used a consultant for the geotechnical borings. Um, and then we have some slides that just show you the existing conditions of the bridge, just to remind you why, why we're here, so the existing bridge is, it's a three, a three-span structure, there are two piers, two abutments. The current configuration of the bridge is that it's been reduced to a single lane of alternating traffic, this was a result of an inspection that Mast D O T had done, where they determined that these five exterior girders, their number one, two, eight, nine, and ten on there, were deteriorated and were not suitable to continue to support traffic, so they were asked that they were taken out of service, they gave this configuration to the DPW, and the DPW implemented this traffic configuration. The girders that are underneath traffic are in satisfactory condition, so it's important that you know that, that they are suitable to continue to support traffic. Mast D O T will continue as long as this bridge is in service to inspect this, I believe it might be bi-annually, they'll determine if it, if inspections need to become more frequent due to the condition of the bridge. You can advance the slides, please. Just, um, some information from the latest load rating report from Mast D O T, some of the conditions of the members, so the condition rating is on a scale of one to, well, really zero to nine, nine being the best and zero being the worst, so some of the important structural elements of the bridge, the deck was rated a five, which is fair condition. The sidewalks, girders, bearings, and diaphragms were rated a four, which is poor condition, so these sections, these elements have advanced section loss, deterioration, spalling, or scour that may impact their load-carrying capacity. The substructure elements, so your piers and your abutments are rated a seven, a seven is good condition, so this is really good news, that means that your substructure elements don't need any maybe minor modifications, some minor rehabilitation, but they're suitable to continue to serve in their existing capacity. Curbs and the wheel guards, they're rated, which is a serious condition, they're not really structural elements, they do more like life and safety, so they're part of the traffic barrier system, so the wheel guards and curbs, the wheel guards are curb-mounted, those work in conjunction with the barrier on the outside of the sidewalk as your traffic barrier system. So this is below is just some of the description of what these ratings mean. You can advance the slide. Uh, these are some photos that were taken by Ty and Bond during our assessment. So, the first photo is underneath the sidewalk, just to show you some of the deterioration that we have underneath the bridge, so in this case, the concrete has spalled, spalling occurs when the reinforcing steel starts to deteriorate and expands, and that forces the concrete off. So we have some spalling underneath the sidewalks, which were, if you could recall, identified as a four, or being in poor condition. There's a photo of the fascia girder, which has a lot of deterioration, you're not really able to see in some of these photos, you might be able to see a little bit of light through the bottom of the girders, that's because there's one hundred percent section loss at the ends of some of these girders, and you know, this is what we're looking to address, this is why these elements have been taken out of service by Mast D O T, and then of course, the picture of the current configuration showing those jersey barriers on top of the bridge. Okay, you can advance the slide, please. Jeff can talk a little bit about the condition of the existing water main.
So Jeff Walker from Ty and Bond, I'm more of the drinking water engineer to work for the, the water department, so what you're seeing here are some photos of the existing water main, it's believed to be nineteen fifty's vintage, it's located in a sidewalk on top of the bridge, it's insulated, protected from freezing, but there are some signs of some of the insulation tearing, and leaves, it's probably been hit by the vehicle. So generally in poor condition, and it's getting up there in the seventy-year age range, which puts it a little bit more in danger of breaking at any point in time, you just, you don't know when it's gonna break. So this became a priority for the water department, once the bridge was restricted to a single lane, they thought of it as a more of a priority project to do.
So we looked at three bridge rehabilitation options, alternative one is localized repairs, and so the repairs were selected to try to achieve a service life of twenty years, if you're going to invest in rehabilitating your structure, you want to get some time out of that, so that you're not going back out there in ten or fifteen years to do more work, so that was the objective of this of this alternative was to achieve the twenty-year service life, that dictated the extent of the repairs that would be performed. Uh, the conceptual cost for the project, so this includes construction costs as well as engineering, is two million, thirty thousand dollars approximately. And there's the breakdown of the engineering and the construction. Alternative two is a complete deck replacement and more extensive structural repairs. One of the differences between alternative one and two is alternative one, we priced out just repainting the girder ends where you get the most bang for your buck. So that includes lead paint abatement, we did find lead paint out there, repainting those girder ends, alternative two repaints the entire length of the girders that you're keeping, so that's one of the differences between the two, alternative two also replaces a lot of additional ancillary items, all of the bearings, all of the diaphragms, you're gonna be starting with almost a new superstructure, and we're gonna keep the existing substructure, as I mentioned, they're in good condition, those elements. And then alternative three was a complete superstructure replacement. So, the cost for alternative two is two point four million dollars, including engineering and construction, and for alternative three, the complete superstructure replacement doesn't reuse any of the components of the existing superstructure, they're all new components, but it does reuse the existing substructure elements. So the cost for that is about four point seven million dollars, a big factor for alternative three with the increased cost is if you're going to replace the superstructure, then you're required to update the substructure elements to the existing seismic design requirements, so just looking at your existing substructure elements, we can assume that they would need some type of retrofit in order to comply with that, so we factored, we factored that into the cost estimate as well. So we did look at the pros and cons associated with these alternatives, and I'm just gonna touch on, on this slide before I advance to the next. So alternative two and three does aim to achieve a longer service life of approximately seventy-five years, this is an objective of Mast D O T when looking to rehabilitate the structure and investing that money is to achieve a seventy-five-year service life. The, an additional pro for alternative one is that work could be executed, keeping the road open, so we estimated the cost of this project, keeping the road open, doing phased construction, which does not require a detour. Alternative two and three, the costs associated with these alternatives, we estimated a complete road closure, so we're looking at a couple of months to close the road in order to complete this. Alternative two or three could be completed under phased construction, however, it would increase the cost of construction. It would add several months onto the duration of construction, so you have costs associated with a longer construction project, the same amount of work is being performed, so the cost of materials isn't necessarily different, but your construction crew is there longer, your administration is longer, overhead costs are longer, so you do have costs associated with that, we estimate the cost to phase construction for alternative, alternative two or three is on the order of like a twenty percent price increase for those. Let's see, we can, we can advance to the next slide. So, some additional considerations, you know, these are around the pros and cons associated with these alternatives, but I just wanted to discuss them a little more in depth, because what we are trying to do with providing you with an alternatives analysis is give you tools to help you make a decision as to which alternative works best for your community. So, I started talking about phasing construction versus complete road closure, and how we had estimated alternative two and three, so one thing that you would want to consider is what is the viable detour if the road was gonna be closed? We understand that Hamlet Mill Road seems like the obvious choice for a viable detour, but there's a bridge on Hamlet Mill Road that's not in good condition right now, Mast D O T, I'm not sure that they've put a load restriction on it, but they have given you
We did a preparation.
Yeah, it's short right now, potentially due to deteriorated string runs somewhere.
It deteriorates more, same thing, naturally.
Yeah, so there's, there's concern as to whether or not the structure could, could sustain additional traffic with a detour, and there are also emergency response times that you need to consider, if the bridge was closed and your service is on the north side of the bridge, how is the south side of the bridge gonna be accessed, is it, are those emergency vehicles gonna be detoured, or do you have to rely on response from other towns, other communities?
Any comments, Chief?
One is we can use Hamlet Mill for emergency access, it's really not that bad, we have to go all the way to Bridge Street
Yep.
Or come in from around via Lloyd Road, that would really add to our response times, but there would still be no closer services than us. That's in a area of town where we're still the closest, no matter how we get there.
Okay.
Understood, thank you for that, Chief.
Yeah, so that's not typically included during the alternatives analysis, the conceptual design phase, that would be considered as you advance the speed design. So service life, you know, I did talk about how alternative one is a twenty-year service life. So at twenty years, because it's not a complete deck replacement, you're doing localized repairs to the deck, so where there are existing spalls, it is expected that, you know, within twenty years, you would have to do additional work on the bridge, so you know, this is twenty years, but you may get to twenty years, and you may not need to do additional work, that's just how you roll the dice, you know, we're doing the best we can with the information that we have available, and we're trying to achieve twenty years of service life with the repairs that we've proposed. The other, the other two alternatives were seventy-five years of service life, that doesn't mean that you don't have to do routine maintenance associated with each alternative to achieve these service lives, so it's recommended that you replace your wearing surface and your waterproofing membrane every twenty years to achieve the most service life you can out of your structure, this is what prevents deicing salts from getting to your deck in the first place, as your wearing surface starts to break down in your waterproofing membrane, that's when the deicing salts get to the deck, that's when you're getting those spalls on the underside that we're seeing. We also want to consider the volatility of the construction market, and take that into consideration with our cost estimates, these are very conceptual at this time. And we did add some language related to the conceptual nature of these cost estimates within the report. So, could be up or down, we're doing the best we can, again, with the information that we have at this time. Another consideration is current inflation rates, and when you're planning for construction and budgeting, so if this, if you are looking to construct this next year, we probably have enough money within the contingency to absorb the inflation rates. But if you are planning on starting construction within five years, you'll just need to take that into consideration and escalate the costs that we've given you out a couple of years as well. And then project costs and funding sources, so alternative one is the least expensive option at that time, and consider what your funding sources are. Okay, is there anything else you wanted to touch on related to these additional considerations?
Um, I guess just on the cost in general, we see it in our everyday lives right now, cost gas, it's, construction industry is no different, there's labor shortages, there's material delays, so, you know, just take that into consideration in the mix here as well.
You notice in your summary and recommendations on four, three, page four dash eleven, that you also, you know, talked about the volatility of materials in the quotes that standard is ten days, but out to, I think, a month, you said, standard quotes are ten days.
Yeah, so, in the construction industry, we're gonna go out to public bid for a project of this nature, without construction documents for, for contractors to bid on, we generally ask them to hold their price for thirty days, so that once you get your bids in, you can review them and make a decision. On the contractor's side, they're pulling their prices together from different material suppliers and vendors, and their material suppliers and vendors are giving them quotes that last seven days, so there's risk on the contractor's side when they give you a bid and are being asked to hold it for that length of time.
Thanks, Dan.
Unfortunately, that is an industry standard, great.
Yes.
Yeah, and there are allowances built in for fluctuations in material costs associated with cement and steel, so that is standard for bridge construction, but not prefabricated elements. So this is your, this is your slide.
Yeah, so, on the water main, we also looked at three alternatives, alternative one was to decouple the water main from the bridge entirely, by putting the water main underneath the road, underneath the river, and come out on the other side with a method which is called horizontal directional drilling. This came out to actually be the most expensive because of the height of the bridge over the water body and the depths that we would need to go to get underneath the bridge piers, and it appears that there's some steel sheeting left in place from the original construction, so you have to go really deep, so the depths were like forty feet deep for the water main to go under the bridge, so the cost got relatively high.
Remaining, is that what you just said?
Steel sheeting, so when they, when they built the bridge, and maybe you can speak to it, but they
They just let it drop in the water.
They, they, they put the steel sheeting to hold the earth back while they're pouring the concrete in the piers.
Okay. Yep, yeah, they're called copper dams, and it's very standard for bridge construction, because it can also act as a form, and it's easier to just leave them in place and cut them off at the water line than it is to try to remove them, so it keeps everything out and allows you to work in the dry within the river, so, and it also then serves as scour protection, so that your substructure elements don't get undermined by high flows, so they do serve a purpose, and it is beneficial to have them unless you're trying to So they do serve a purpose and it is beneficial to have them unless you're trying to directional drill underneath them, then it's not. And they were confirmed to be there when we reviewed the underwater inspection report.
So alternative one was, was not the recommended alternative. Alternative two is putting the water main underneath the bridge deck in a utility bay, which is very common construction for bridge utilities. It's up site at that point. So all the bridges you drive over, you may not realize there might be utilities hanging underneath. That is actually the recommended water main alternative. And that came out to conceptual cost of six hundred and twenty thousand dollars with all, all the construction, the engineering and contingencies put together. And the third alternative was similarly like a replacement kind to put it back on a sidewalk. It's a little cheaper than putting it underneath because it's easier to construct above grounds. But it, it still would be visible, which might be a little bit of an eyesore on the bridge. So in discussions with the water department, they have agreed with our recommendation to move with the alternative number two in the bridge that utility bay underneath the bridge deck.
So the next steps. So we did, within the report, we did go into some detail of immediate actions that could be taken to avoid closure of the bridge. And this was done at the request of the town, can also considering the condition of Hamlet Mills Road. In trying to avoid closure of the structure. And I talked to the district bridge engineer. And while the traffic is currently supported over those five girders and they appear to be more than sufficient to continue to support traffic, you could put some blocking underneath the girders that do have deterioration. What you don't want to see is those girders sort of settling under their own weight, given that there is section loss of the web. It could put undue stresses on the girders that you have. So I don't see any need to do anything with the girders that are currently supporting the road. But you could put some timber blocking underneath those other girders to support them up so that they don't collapse underneath the sidewalks. It's just under their own weight. They're not getting any traffic loads. So I'm not concerned about the integrity of the bridge, but it is something that the town could do to keep it open for the duration until the rehabilitation is in place. And so, you know, selecting an alternative and then advancing your, the development of your construction documents, which includes design and permitting, getting a bid ready set of drawings together. These are the steps that would be done during the next phase. So there would be initial Mastiot partnering, every bridge greater than ten feet in the state of Massachusetts goes through what's called a chapter eighty five review process. Mastier T has jurisdiction to review under Mass General Law, chapter eighty five to review all bridges greater than ten feet. Any work that's being done to them. So you would like your engineer to get involved, get Mastiot involved right away to discuss the design approach, get them on board, let them air any concerns, questions. So those can be taken into consideration as the design is advancing rather than at the end of the design when they're doing their review. Then you go into your chapter eighty five review and you're not exploring those big questions as it's already been ironed out. There may be some environmental permitting that would be required and review with the Templeton Conservation Commission. And then establishing your funding source. So that's also something that we explored within the report. You know, and then beyond design, you go into your bidding and your construction phase. In advance to the next slide. So these are some of the funding sources that could be explored. So the transportation improvement program is generally the most generous option. So there are two ways of getting on the tip. There's through the Mastiot Bridge Program, which is pretty formulaic. The, the chief bridge engineer has a formula that considers the condition of the bridge, the functional classification of the roadway, the average annual daily traffic. All these characteristics of the bridge are taken into consideration to prioritize it on the bridge program list. And there's also through the Regional Planning Authority. Regional planning authorities don't historically fund bridge projects because they're very expensive. And usually their budgets don't account for such large costs like that. They prefer to complete street projects. But these are unprecedented times. There is more funding available through the federal government. And that may be passed through some regional planning authorities. So you could involve your state legislators, your, your reps and your senator to try to advocate to get you on one of these lists. When I was talking to the district bridge engineer, he did say that this bridge is not currently on the bridge program list through Mastiot. There's also the state transportation bill. I've spoken with Adam and I understand he's trying to get funding earmarked on that as well. There are some grants. The build grant is a federal grant. And there's also the Mass Works Grant through the state. These are both very competitive. The build grant is a large effort and I feel is more competitive than Mass Works. And I, I don't feel this is a great candidate for the build grant. Mass Works is potent, potentially an opportunity. We've talked about this. For this size bridge in this community, you would really have to tie it to some economic development. So we would have to look into that. We'd probably talk to the industry on, on the southwest corner of the bridge, Seaman Paper, and see if we could work something out there. They're also very willing to talk to you about your projects and help you, help steer you to make your application more competitive. I don't know if you have experience with Mass Works that you want to speak to.
Nothing more than what you said.
There's also ARPA funding. So when ARPA was originally established, it was for water sewer and telecommunications.
Yeah, so ARPA, every town got some allotment of money meant for either COVID relief dollars or using it for water sewer or broadband infrastructure. That's the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act.
So we understand that may have been relaxed a little and there's more funding available and not as strict. We haven't seen anything written.
Yeah, you want to, you want to confirm with the regulators on that specifically, but it might be an option.
And there's local borrowing. So you could bond to pay for the rehabilitation project as well as chapter ninety funds that are distributed through the state. So these are the funding sources that we've currently explored and discussed with the town.
I saw that you included those in here. Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Great. So if you advance to the next slide, that concludes our presentation. So, you know, we were just trying to give you a broad overview of why we're here today. The results of our alternatives analysis over the results of each alternative with you. The next steps in the funding sources. See if you have any questions about the information that's been provided.
Very comprehensive. I know board member Bennett watches the chapter ninety. We've identified some shortcomings that things did not make it to the governor's final budget. Questions have been raised. I've been following the ARPA and the American Rescue Plan Act and its predecessors. And even though the final was released in December, we're still seeing some changes. So it's still a living and moving document. The target isn't quite secured. Continually looking and just making sure we're dotting the i's, crossing the t's because nobody wants to get caught. Do it inappropriately. And then the Treasury Department puts their hand down and says, pass, pass now.
Yeah, that's why established programs, you know, we can clearly tell you, you can use it for this and that. This is a new law and they're still kind of writing the guidelines. That's, that's why we don't want to say for sure.
Definitely sailing in uncharted waters.
Yeah, the Mass Works Grant is substantial. It is very competitive. So, you know, you would have to have a, a project that fit the, the description of their, of their grant program. But it could potentially fund your entire project. There, there are sizable grants that are distributed through Mass Works. It's just whether or not you can tie economic development to the work being performed on the bridge. They do have a strap program where you don't have to tie economic development, but that's associated with a community that's smaller than Templeton. So unfortunately, that doesn't, that wouldn't work. But if Mass Works, Works, Works. That would be an opportunity for next year. They do want to see advanced design documents. So you wouldn't be eligible to apply this year if you were interested, but you could start the discussions with them this year to see whether it would be a good project, a good fit for next year when you would be looking to start construction.
Can I ask if, if we decided to reconstruct the entire bridge, shut down that road? How, is there an estimated amount of time, how long it's going to take to complete this?
Yeah, so I believe with alternative two, we had said the road closure would be about three to four months. And for alternative three, it was going to be two to three months. Now, we don't have a design yet, so these are just estimates. These are estimates. So. Yeah, so there are considerations that could be made to increasing the length of your day, encouraging work on the weekends to try to consolidate that schedule to make it a shorter window. And it could change, you know, I'm saying it's two, two to three to four months now, two to three months, but it could be potentially shorter. We tried to be conservative with that number because the last thing we want to tell you is that it's going to be closed for three to four months and it's closed for seven or eight months. So, you know, we, we tried to be conservative with that number. I would see it getting smaller and not larger. Thank you.
And we do have a member participating remotely. Mr. Curry, any comments or thoughts to enter?
I do. Thank you very much for that, definitely thing. What I'm most interested, I can, I think I can see Ron sitting behind, tying bond right now. I'm most interested in having a conversation jointly with, with the Water Commission kind of take a look and see what some of the hidden items that we need to talk about. But I also like to try and figure out how we can fund some of the, the things like the loading through like the permitting and the path to actually, you know, construction or something. Those are my concerns.
Thank you for that, Mike. I just, I want to, Ron, I just want curiosity, which option do you all prefer? Over the sidewalk drill or in the box?
In the box under the bridge. The water main that's on Otter River Road or Main Street going over the Otter River Bridge, the River Road Bridge before you get to Depot Road. It's done the same way. It's protected underneath there. And if you have to work on it, it's, it's a spot where you can get in to work on it. You'd have the problem with that water main a few years back where it froze and broke. We see for, easy for them to hook on and pull the old one out and slide a new one in.
That was my question too about potential for freezing under the bridge if there's potential for that. But I also wanted to comment on the fact that you did the research on the asbestos and hired a professional. And for the people in our community that are interested in environment, you did a risk PCs. You looked at that, the riverfront bordering vegetated wetlands. So that was much appreciated. They can see it in the report. I won't read it, but that was all kid taking care of.
Very comprehensive report.
No one, do you have anything to add?
I do. Mr. Sozick and Ron and Mr. Triscoll and engineers, we've met up what, two or three times at least, and then met separate occasions as well with this project. But what we, what we did is, and you know, obviously this project, you see the price tag associated with any of the alternatives. And quite frankly, even Andrew and I, we were talking about it. It ultimately comes down to alternative number one for the town or alternative number two. Because the superstructure is just, we, we can't afford that. And quite frankly, I don't think you could afford alternative number two either. So what I did is I, I reached out to town council and wanted to get an opinion because based on the fact that the board declared our ARPA funds revenue loss. He opinioned back that this would be an acceptable use for the town to use those funds to get alternative one, which we can afford based on the numbers we have now. Because as the engineers already mentioned, the longer we wait, the more the costs could go up. And this is something that the town already committed two hundred thousand dollars for. Also send, I requested Senator Goby's office a earmark of two hundred thousand dollars from the state. So we're looking at if we could get the two hundred thousand from the state and the two hundred thousand dollars already have appropriate. That's about four hundred thousand dollars and we have a little roughly, what, two point four million dollars of ARPA. So at least the town's in a good position in the sense of receiving those funds. So it puts us where we could actually afford an alternative. And we discussed too, the, the difficulty with the bridge shutdown, you know, three to five months of not being able to get to the other side of town. I mean, that's one thing where residents get extremely frustrated about. So alternative one, even though it's, the lifespan is not as long. You, you could keep that bridge open. That's, that's what really caught my eye with alternative number one. And they say twenty years, but that's, that can be even longer. I mean, that's just an estimate. So I think, I think that we're in, we're not ideally in the best position, but we're not in a bad situation either. I think right now we have the two hundred thousand dollars appropriated granted after this report. And we pay this report, we'll still have enough to go to the next phase of the project, the design phase. So we could keep this project moving forward with the money that we have appropriated. It's just a matter of what alternative the town's going to move forward with. And I, I think there's, like I said, it's, it's not the, it's not the worst situation, but it's not the best either. Based upon what we can actually afford today.
Did you consider or look at any of the numbers? Excuse me for alternative number two. That's what I was waiting on.
We did.
Looking at that with the numbers.
We did.
And you don't think we can get there. You don't think we can find.
I believe we could get there with the current, with the current money that we have out of ARPA. But if any costs go up, we're going to be in trouble.
And we roll our sleeves up a little bit perhaps and look at the Mass Works option as well.
We're going, we're going to weigh all the options and.
Definitely. We've been told before it hasn't stopped us from asking.
We're good, we're good at applying. So that's, that's all I have to share with, with the board. We had some great dialogue. And not sure, Mr. Through the chair to Mr. Sozik or Mr. Dab, if they wanted to add anything further that I may have missed.
I would just, I would just comment on the options. Past history of the town going cheap, doesn't work out well. Not, not a discussion for this meeting with this subject right now, but this makes the strongest case. If there's going to be one for a grant writer for the town, payoff big time. There's a lot of funds out there. There's a lot of money coming. Yep, they did, the house did take the hundred million of chapter ninety money out of their, their house budget. I popped an email off to Senator Goby and asking if he could. Doesn't mean anything, but, but there's also the other infrastructure bond bill that the governor put forward. It's to something by the time, hopefully by like next year, by the time the state house gets done, they're back and forth with it. But there's a lot of options and a lot of money. And like I said, this is probably the strongest case we've had to hire a grant writer. You know, in the next fiscal year, I, I think the payoff would be big time and more than cover the cost of it. Even if it's just for a certain period of time. You look at just the city of God, they spend about five hundred grand a year going for grants and stuff. But again, I think their record today is like around ten million. That's pretty dang good investment. That's like Rich Curtis, you know, six, about six grand a year and he gets nothing. In, in grant money he brings in each year that he's been there. So I, again, not for this meeting, for, for these folks, but this makes a case for us to consider a, a grant writer to go after this other money because cheap has not worked out well for this town. Whenever we go, oh, it's economic. Oh, we'll save money. Oh, we're getting it for free. Yeah. Takes the seat of your pants out, two, three years down the road and then some. So that's my two cents. I'm an option two guy and.
That's, that's that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have to agree with Jeff on this absolutely 100%. I have. Looked at numbers over the years being on the board and whatnot, and we have actually. Attempted it and had this conversation and we really should put it on another meeting for our discussion in regards to getting someone to start writing our grants. It's facts. I mean, there's no way around it.
And my two cents go just two cents. I mean, I, I highly recommend we go with alternative two. And take our time, whether it's a year or two, find some other. Grants or monies, federal monies. I'd like to see it done right. 20 years ain't that long. We're going to be right back there where. Just look at our roads. I'm not in favor of chapter 90 money because we need that in our roads. But I don't think a 20 year fixes.
But the problem is finding money. Until we find the money. It's going to be unfold. And costs go up.
That's, that's the reality of it.
That's the reality.
Good discussion, good comments. Excellent report.
Yeah, excellent report. Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda. Item B. Regarding the town property use permit, Y and Z.
Not sure if you want to take that after the ones that are on the old business or take those first. There's two or three that are kind of.
That's item D. According to the March 9th minutes. It says.
Okay.
A Leicester Town sponsored.
Unless they're town sponsored, so that's already established. I want to make sure that.
It's already established by policy.
Okay, so, okay, I get it. I just wanted to be.
And I think that's what Jeff's point was.
So there's no fee for them?
If the with Julie's motion, there wouldn't be.
With with my motion and and the passing of this. The decision will be up to our town administrator. He can take a five break out in the hallway.
Discussion. A motion made and seconded on the floor. Who to refer the town to administrator as a town sponsored event for approval? How do we vote? Jeff?
Yes.
There?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
I vote yes as well, and I get a message while we were finishing up the presentation with Ty and Bond from Mr. Curry. He apologized for the background noise. And it's not that he does not want to participate, but he says, please do not enter me for a roll call votes. So I'll work with that. I understand he's stuck at the airport right now, so.
So I would still call on him and just put it out of chair. Just for the record, I'll have him out of chair.
I'll abstain. I'll abstain.
Do we know? Thank you, Mr. Curry.
That works.
Thank you very much, Edward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have fun.
Will there be an Easter bunny at the Easter? Do we know who that person may or may not be? It's the real guy.
Not to be.
I have a new costume, too.
So I guess.
There you go.
We are gonna have a.
Spoiler alert, any parents with children in the room?
No, we're getting the real one. You just stated.
It's the Easter bunny. So Holly, we're all set with all our documentation?
Yeah.
Provided to you.
And I'll so I'll get an email to you.
Okay, thanks a lot. Thank you so much.
Is there a age one?
Grade one to grade four, or actually preschool.
I'll go back to fourth grade.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Nice to see you.
You too. Nice to see you.
Next on the agenda, item E, action regarding Templeton Developmental Center representative. Mr. Wong, do you want to lead us on that?
That will be appropriate. We received this correspondence from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Massachusetts for them, from the Division of Capital Asset. Management Maintenance. They're looking at doing some. Disposition out at the Templeton Developmental Center. They reached out to me. And they want to start getting together with the town department heads here and my me. But I told them, I think the best approach, so the public's aware of it. Is to send a letter to have a representative from the select board be involved with that process as well. And you see the letter from the Deputy Commissioner for Real Estate requesting that, so we could get that process moving. That project's been going, I mean, that that site's been there for quite some time, and. I want to, I think the state's trying to make some. Progress over there, so.
Mike, if I may, Mr. Jim. My question or concern or just clear something up. Under my town government, there's still. Templeton Development Reuse Committee. Holly's listed as contact. The last met or meeting. Thing they have listed is like 2015. I don't know if that committee was ever, because the Common Improvement Committee, I think, was dissolved, but it's still listed under my town government. I don't know if that one is still. I know there was planning board member. There was, I don't know, five or six people on it. Again, the last thing that's posted for a meeting, and there's no minutes posted, so I can't tell. But it was back in 2015, and Holly Young is listed as. The contact person or who posts meetings and stuff. So I just, if that committee's still. In existence, it has gone away, or is it just like? Interest waned or what? That would be my.
Didn't we appoint Mike?
I'd like to see if we dissolve that committee or if it's still just floating out there.
I thought we appointed Mike and Julie to that.
That that's way before my time. Holly, do you, were you here during that or?
Yeah, that it's. The state was involved, and there were several people that were on the committee. And I think it was in 2015 that we had a meeting. And the state kept putting it on hold.
It's when it closed and there was. They were talking about selling chunks of that land and things like that, so. And I remember we got, because part of it's in Phillipsden or West End where, yeah, it's one of them divided up things. And I just want to make sure, if we send, you know, select one thing, if we still. Have that committee, if we want to consider that or or what, I just, I remembered we had that committee. And I was, so I went looking and I was like, I thought we had met or appointed somebody. More recent, but.
Yeah.
The rolodex sometimes sticks, but I just wanted to make. Remind people of that, that we did have that committee at one time. So, you know, and I don't want the state coming. Well, it sounds like the state didn't remember it, but. I mean, it's, that's an important thing that we should be involved in and then keep up what's going on there, because. There's a resident, Mr. Casey. He worked up there and he still keeps it, because he came to a meeting, selectmen's meeting, not. Or a town meeting, one of the two. I think it was town meeting. Take an open space thing with when like Carter's time, so it wasn't that far back. And he had said at the time that the state was looking to sell a lot of that. Prosses of land and stuff up there, so. And town. Discontinued. Break shed road or voted to have that, because we didn't want to have plowing maintenance and all that stuff responsibility when they started rolling. The state started rolling back on that, but it is. I, it's important for us to, I think, to get in on that case, just. Be abreast, be in the room if any development sales happen, you know, something's going to do this or that. Because that has an effect on other things we could have. Town water sale, for example. Town electric. You know.
Well, the good thing is the state wants to work with us and they reached out, so.
Well, like I said, I just. Want to remind everybody that we did have a committee at one time, meeting with D Cam and all of that. We, if there's any records going, you know, we may have.
I think about three years ago, we had a meeting. It was me, Carter, you, police chief. Discussing that property over there. What's going to happen? They're going to divide it up and see if we have first options after they divide it up and what we're interested in. For the towns and trust.
Yeah, but Jeff, what Jeff's talked about was there's a committee before either us, we were here.
But we can touch base on it.
Wasn't CPC going to buy a piece of that land in the town? It was voted no. At town meeting.
That may have been before.
Twenty nineteen, twenty nineteen. And then when we reorganized after the election last year, we appointed Mike and Julia's liaisons to that.
I believe we appointed them to that committee.
Yeah.
I think we've been appointing select board members all along, just in case the state decided to actually.
I was on it before, then something happened during COVID and.
The CPC put together an article for that property?
That's what Mr. Case spoke about. He said it was all wetlands. It wasn't worth.
Yeah, but we do, the CPC, we did buy a bunch of stuff up there.
When was that?
Then it.
I'm thinking it was right when we first, when I first came on, twenty nineteen.
There was a swap of some land.
Yeah.
Around all of the, up in the woods and everything and. So that they could do something. We had to give up some town land and get something. Back in exchange for it and everything. That's what Ken Case, when we were talking about that town meeting, because the state wanted to do. Something. We had to swap land that we owned to get different lands. They took ownership of it, so that way. The state wildlands could take some of that.
And we did.
Big sections, so that they could. Open up for hunting and fishing and hiking trails and stuff like that. There was swapping of the land back then.
That was before COVID, because he didn't have a mask on.
No, correct. It was back, Carter was here. Back when that happened, it was.
Twenty nineteen.
The other thing is, the fire department is using at least one of the old buildings up there. We use it for training. Through D Cam and everything like that, so.
I just don't recall that happening at, or recall it, at town meeting.
It was, but he spoke to it in one of the land things.
John Henshaw spoke to as well to defend it, to defend CPCs. We're talking about for, for Templeton Development.
But anyways. I just wanted to remind people of that, that we did have a committee at one time.
So this really should.
We asked Julie if she understands any or can speak to it possibly.
That at one time they had a committee that was looking at the land. Correct, they did. I was also on that committee. It was through D Camp. It's a little bit different. They're getting ready to do some sales and such. It's a little bit different, and they were looking at. Wetlands and stuff like that, but it really never evolved.
Right.
Kind of got stuck. So they're going a different move is where I can understand from all of that stuff. Just go in a different way so they can get it done.
Sounds like we have a lot of, lot more questions than we have answers, and we need to do a little bit of homework. It would probably be better if we moved this, deferred it to our next meeting and made it an old business item. So we don't make the decision that we have to go back and change our mind on and. We'll do some research on.
On that committee.
Hey, this is Mike, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, sir.
Hey, um. I re, I realized that there, you know, we might have made some appointments and there, you know, what, there might have been a committee before. But why don't we just react to the letter and appoint someone in the interim? To work with Adam. I mean, is that, I mean, at least that reacts to the letter that we got, and then we can sort out who is on what committee and if it's still. Active or otherwise. Over.
Oh, that's a good point. Thank you. You wish to entertain that as a motion, sir?
I don't have the language in front of me, but I would, I would make a motion to have Julie Richard. Be the representative to work with Adams in the meetings with D Cam and TNC.
Mr. Chair. And Mike, Mike, I really appreciate that suggestion. However, I will be abstaining from this. Due to conflict.
Okay, understood.
All right.
He's leaving.
Do you have a question for Mike?
No. What the heck? If you want to amend your motion, Mike, you can.
Okay, I amend my motion to, I will make a motion that, that, I'm sorry, Jeff Bennett, be the representative to work with the town administrator. On the TDC memo along with D Cam.
Second to that motion, Mike.
Mr. Chair, could I amend that motion? I would also add that I would be Jeff's alternative.
So for the discussion, do you copy that, Mr. Curry? Ms. Griffiths as an alternative for Mr. Bennett?
Yep, amended.
Do we know? Second amendment.
Second amendment.
Okay.
So a motion with discussion and an amendment to the motion number four. Let's bring this to the vote, Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Abstain.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Next up, item E, actions regarding health and dental insurance, FY twenty three.
All good news. Another year of, well, no increase. For fiscal year twenty three and a reduction in dental. As I outlined in my memorandum. Fiscally, year twenty two, we received that premium holiday, which turned out to be with the. Overall, a seven point seven eight percent reduction with the little adjustment that they increased it to, but with the premium holiday ended up being a total seven point seven eight percent reduction. We've been bored and. In our office, we've been working extremely hard on the health insurance front. I think a lot of folks can say this doesn't happen by accident. When you see all the other budgets and health insurance costs going up year by year, and. This took a lot of time, a lot of work by not only our office, but the folks over at NFP. And we're very fortunate to have these numbers come in for two years in a row with no increase in health insurance. That, that is tremendous. And I'm not trying to pat Adam on the back here, but, you know, I do commend the work the board did, you know, when we first got that joint purchasing agreement done. I think that, you know, gave us a tool that we could always go out to bid, which I think helped make the process more competitive. And you know, we're always going out whenever we can to the marketplace on to save money and. Was, will continue to have quality healthcare. For the. For this, and unfortunately, the IAC met, they didn't have enough members for their meeting, general consensus, everybody wasn't in favor of this, and. I don't see how anybody could say no. And they just couldn't take any action, but consensus was from the IAC. That they're in favor of this rate renewal. That's what I have for you, Mr. Chair.
I think that JPA definitely has worked to our benefit and advantage, and the MIAA on top of this has done some great work in our behalf. It was definitely the right thing to do when we pulled the trigger on that.
It's something, it's something we could all be proud of. That was. You know, there was a lot of paperwork there and a lot of going out to bid and. But it turned out to be Templeton's best interest.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
I move to approve the MIAA renewal of health insurance with zero percent increase in dental insurance with a reduction of negative two point two six percent. And for the town administrator to sign it.
Second to that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Last again, any discussion?
If I can, this, this fiscal year twenty three will be the year where everybody's on one town, on the town side of the house for health insurance and dental coverage.
Excellent.
Outstanding. Hearing no further discussion, we'll go to the vote. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. And just for the record, to set it straight, that was action item F, I believe I misspoke and called it item E. I was looking at the wrong lines. I was advancing through the agenda. Item G. Actions regarding the approval of the town budget for FY twenty three.
You see the fiscal year twenty twenty three budget in front of you. The only adjustment, and I got to thank Jeff for pointing this out, he went through all the accounts due to a rounding error. We have to decrease insurance and benefits by a dollar, so it would be two million, six hundred thirty seven thousand, one thirty nine. And that will total and bring us to the, the number listed there at nine million, nine forty five, three ninety five. So I want to thank him for catching that. And that's our level funded budget for fiscal year twenty twenty three on the town side of the house.
So, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Curry.
So Adam, it's presented with the amendment that's going to bring insurance benefits down to thirty nine, not forty?
Correct.
Okay. All right, then I would make, I would make a motion to. To approve the town budget for FY twenty three as presented with amendment.
Second to that motion.
Any further discussion?
This is number two budget for you under your belt, isn't it now?
Yes, indeed. Looking forward to town meeting.
Nicely done.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Curry, I have one comment. If you wish to amend your A. Your motion and add the verbiage as presented for the board to sign.
So moved. Or so amended.
Do we know it? And the second is amended to match that as well. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none, we'll bring this to the vote. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Item H. Action regarding approving the warrant for the annual town meeting twenty twenty two.
Mr. Vice Chair, I move to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented in Board of Directors to sign.
Second.
Motion made.
Apparently our town administrator has a couple of adjustments he wants to share with us.
No, no, it's fine.
We do, we do. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just note that. After checking the BLR amendment for the advisory committee, the one that's in the warrant now is the, the one that. The board voted on or gave consensus to originally, so it's all correct as it was presented originally to the board back December. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. One thing, just comments?
I do. There's a couple of adjustments I want to make before you approve them, so. I'll, I'll need Julie to amend her motion with the presented adjustments I'm going to bring to your attention. If we could go to consent agenda. Under section, Article Two, under section C, set annual spending limits of revolving funds. This would be community services revolving fund. I'm looking at increasing that to forty five K. The reason why I'm doing this is because I received the call from the Chair of the REC Committee, and they're looking at, um, having a, a summer program. Because I did, but I wondered, because it was up to sixty thousand. And this, this is an account that. As you know, with the budget, we're based on the Westfield State study, a lot of the. Budget expenses for recreation are coming out of the revolving fund. So the, this, we want to make sure we have enough to cover the expenses to be on the safe side. We'll just do forty five thousand. Any questions on that? Then moving. Article five. Amending the bylaws regarding capital permits committee. Right before. Right at the end, it should say, or take any other action. Article five. Right at the, the last.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Any questions on that? Under Article nineteen, the infrastructure stabilization account, stabilization fund, excuse me. Last sentence would say, or take any other action related there, too. Yeah. So, or take any other, other action related there, too, and that would be the same language for Article five for the last sentence. Any questions on those? Then under Article twenty five. I have fourteen thousand, five hundred towards. Special articles. I'm looking at changing that to ten thousand. This is to start the Laurelview Road Engineering Title Examination, so instead of seven thousand, that'd be twenty five hundred. Just so we can figure out what the costs are, hopefully, the maps line up perfectly and. That'd be more than enough. That would at least be the start. So that would be ten thousand. Total. Seven thousand, five hundred for street sign replacement will stay the same, and then it would be. Instead of just Laurelview Road Engineering Title Examination, it would say Start Laurelview Road Engineering forward slash title examination of twenty five hundred. And that's the only changes I have for the warrant. Okay, we'll have that ready for you.
The. I saw the citizen's petition was added as well.
That is correct. The citizen's petition, the changed tax exemption age. So it ought to be an interesting town meeting.
He's working on that number.
Oh, I know you called.
Yeah.
And you want to know the impact?
There is a formula.
So I'll amend my motion to include Adams' changes.
Thank you. Okay, motion entered has been amended to include the changes.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none, when you see the vote, Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
I vote yes.
And I vote yes as well. Okay, thank you. That brings us to. Next, item six, whole business. First item there, A, action regarding town property use policy update.
I did with this, Mr. Chair, is I had. Holly worked with Justice in our office and have some proposed changes with the board. Looking at, since they're the ones that get the applications and everything, I wanted them to be creative and. Bring up, come up with something that felt appropriate, that they could manage. I shouldn't say manage, but when they take the forms and everything, so when they bring everything to me, or whether it's approval or bring it to the select board, depending upon what the request is. So with this, Holly, if you wanted to kind of outline the work you and Justice did on this.
I took into consideration what everyone was saying about charging or not charging for. Non. What I'm looking for here. Thank you, nonprofit. And. I thought we had talked about doing levels, whether it's above so much or below so much, and when I started looking into it, there are a bunch of different levels for nonprofits. So I thought it would be easier to. Determine which ones should be town sponsored, because they do so much for the town, and all of the events are geared towards the town. And there are other ones saying, you know, might, might come in from another town that are just doing it as a fundraiser. And I thought that they should be charged, but. And I thought that they should be charged, but that's my suggestion, really up to the board. And I did add in the definition.
Mister Chair?
Mister Curry?
Yeah, I, um, I think that we asked a lot of different questions and I think this is, uh, I think what the proposed changes to the town use policy makes sense to me and allow us to basically, the discretion to figure out, the conditions under which the, the town use is being used. So I, I think these recommended changes are great. Unfortunately.
Thank you for that. Any other comments or questions, Tim?
Yes, uh, Mister Chair? Okay, I'm just looking at, I've just, original, the original fees, twenty-five a day, hundred a day, two hundred a day, so forth. I, I don't know how we arrived at those. I, I went and looked at our current community comparisons towns. Uh, there was a few, um, Montague, Town of Montague is currently on our current list of community comparison, and they're also on the proposed one from the advisory committee. Uh, I looked at the websites of Shirley, Ashburnham, Orange, and Dudley. I didn't find anything on their website and I didn't take the time to call their administrator to, to see if they had one. It's not on their website. But Athol has one. And the only cost that they have, and this comes under, uh, parks. They have a park bandstand and this and that. For verifiable not-for-profit organization, they charge a ten dollar per day fee. Air, you don't want to party there. They charge, uh, what's it? Fifty dollars per field per hour. And this is under their parks department. Uh, they also have a facility, parks facility for dog policy. That's all that they mentioned for, for cost, uh, for doing anything. Munson, they have parks and recreation. They show no mention of a, of a fee. Except for a rental of, like a town hall. It's a single day rental fee of hundred per event, a seasonal for four hundred. If you require a, a porta potty at the location, they add a hundred and twenty in one. Uh, yeah. Then there's a, uh, under the Board of Selectmen, applications for arts and crafts fair, plant sale, use of the gazebo, or others. It's very simple, it's one-page form, and it has no mention of, uh, any money for that. The parks thing, uh, those, those charges are more for, uh, for different leagues, for teams and stuff. Townsend, um, they have, uh, a suggested, a suggested donation fee of fifty bucks would help the department, but it, it doesn't say mandated. Uh, apparently they also have a food court up there in the back of the common. The town of Winchington, they have, uh, it's a two-page agreement to, you can rent the town hall auditorium, the town hall, uh, the park bandstand, the old Murdoch Senior Center, the Winchening Community Park. They list, uh, the activity people, blah, 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 town manager's signature. They require certificate of insurance, uh, the building superintendent in the amount of, if there's a, a fee requirement, you, you pay a minimum of four hours, uh, whatever this may be. They, they don't list what that dollar amount might be. And it's, it's kind of similar with the proposed community comparisons, uh, of what they, you know, may charge or not. So I, um, my, my first question is with regarding to fees, what do these fees cover? What do they pay for? I mean, if an event doesn't need police or fire there, uh, what's the town expense? We require them to pick up their trash and do this and that and that stuff. Then if you have something like the craft fair, you usually have, uh, certain people out there, and that's volunteer organization. I just.
Who holds the insurance?
Don't know. They, I, I believe where they, people that use the common are required to carry insurance.
Unless it's town sponsored. But even if it's town sponsored, let's say it's a nonprofit organization, then they would have to have the insurance.
So, I mean, I'm trying to get it straight in my head. What is the reason for charging all these? What is the impact to the town where we need additional fee other than just create revenue? But if you look at the D O R's, uh, thing on fees, the, the intent of charging fees is not just, uh, raise general fund revenue, it's, uh, to cover the cost of providing that idol. I don't know. If there's a police officer required, I mean, we already have in some budgets, uh, police detail funds. And keep in mind that we're probably gonna have to relook at this again because if the parks commission by law passes, you look at the vote and policy for the parks and fields and stuff was gonna revert to the park commissioners. Not us. That's town meeting vote back in November twenty-twenty-one. So, you know, this is a work in progress. And, and as far as the fees, I think they're just,
Just a minute, Mike.
They're kind of high for, uh, to me, they're hard to justify. The impact on the town facilities versus, you know, the, the cost, i- it versus what the fees are. I, I think, looking at a comparison communities outside of air, that they're, say, you don't play ball there. Uh, that's fifty dollars per hour. So, a- and I've just, if we are gonna have a fee, I would just like to see it be more uniform across the board because an Easter egg hunt for a nonprofit and a wedding party that's there for a few hours to take some pictures and stuff. Uh, at least consider per event instead of per day. I, I, I don't know, um, fee structures might, might hang out with this, I guess. Plus, looking forward that the parks commissioners are gonna take over a good part of this. Other than use of town buildings, like if somebody wants to have a meeting here or do something at the senior center or something. You know, then that would fall on us, I believe. But the fields, to include the common, I think, because that's a, we're gonna designate that a park or open space or, you know, again, it went at that parks commission passes, uh, that special legislation, they come into play. Then by town meeting vote and the bylaw that we put in front of us is gonna be, you know, in their, their laps. So this was, we're gonna be visiting this again.
Mister Curry, any comments or?
Thank you. I did, um, and, and it's to Jeff's point. I, I, I know that he talked about a couple of direct costs where you would have, um, uh, you're shutting off the, the, shutting down the road or things like that. But I think that some of these fee structures also can cover some of the indirect costs. I know that buildings and grounds is charged with mowing lawns and otherwise, but it, and when we have increased use and most of the, most of the time that these apartments are asked for, they're during times when we're taking care of grounds a little bit more than we would be in fall or winter when snow's covering everything. So I would, I would ask that everybody just kind of take a moment to consider some of the indirect costs that go into that. Because those are harder to identify. And I totally get what you're saying, Jeff, in, in terms of, are these fees trying, are we trying to make money on this? Or are we trying to cover some of the expenses that we have? And I, and I think that there's just some unseen things that are, that we wind up having additional money for. And in the future, if it's parks and recrea-, you know, parks and recreations money, so be it. But it is going towards something that is supporting the overall effort. So.
You raised a good point. Thank you, sir.
Mister Vice Chair, I don't know, this is just off the top of my head, I bounced it off. You know, he was talking about indirect costs. Could we direct the fees that we collect to something, like to rec or to, uh, uh, you know, for upkeep or whatever to, you know?
You can, but it would be difficult.
Okay.
Yeah. It's better, it's better to just come in as general receipt.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it becomes a, uh, that would be a transfer of funds on the town meeting floor, because anything coming in, we go to the general fund and we don't have the authority to make such a recommendation.
Unless you create a revolving fund.
Unless you create a revolving fund.
The Parks Commission.
We just want to get.
When they already have.
You know how much? Is there any idea, Holly, like an estimate of what we took in last year and the year before? Can we, can I? For these fee, did we ever charge these?
Never charged. We've never. We created this because we needed to start charging fees, correct? This is.
It takes a lot of staff time to do these. And if you have, if you're doing it for free, you're gonna have people having events every week. Creating more staff time, I just think about that.
So that's an indirect cost.
Correct.
You have to process the permits and your, everything in your office.
So I can say that I agree with Jeff as far as looking at some of the, the, like the per day, maybe per event, maybe consider that as, as a whole, instead of per day, uh, because this can get high if someone's there for three days.
Well, we spoke.
Should they be paying for the time they're using? Craft Festival, they have two days. How much are they raising? Can't pay for that.
They are raising. I, I, I get it.
So we spoke.
The per day, I'm a little bit.
We, we spoke to this and it was one of the reasons I recall we deferred this. Mister Bennett was not here at the meeting.
Right.
But case in point, the Lions Club's Christmas tree sales, and that goes on for a number of days. And even at twenty-five dollars a day, that becomes a significant charge.
Right. A little worried on, on, uh, where the money came from. Like this was deter-, like, I got a little confused coming into this particular discussion because I thought we were creating this and changing it. That's why it's on, it's on for our agenda tonight, correct? For us to make that call on that. So I was.
So if the board wanted to.
I'm like, I understand the wording and the assistance with it, and I appreciate that. But yeah, we're, we're, Christ, I, I don't know.
Hang on just a moment. TCTV, are we still live streaming? Because the video is paused. I wanted to go to the next video.
The connection for YouTube dropped at one point, but the stream restarted. So there is a second video on our YouTube channel that is still streaming the meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Wanted to make sure we weren't getting caught on a technical glitch. That's why I have it up and running here in the background quietly. Mister Wanting, go ahead, sir.
So if the board wanted to, we could, you, they could update it per day to per event. We can make those changes.
I think that makes a little more sense and may make it a little more powerful to the board.
So we'll change per day, but then the permit fee schedule to per event. Holly, you got the? As it goes with the section B where it says for recurring events. Makes it more flow about the policy document. So with the highlighted changes, Mister Chair, and the, um, the change per day to per event. Like Jeff already alluded to, we're gonna be back on this too, once the special legislation gets through the general court, uh, regardless. So.
Great. This is the foundation document. Once we get that special legislation and we bring that commission up online.
So Mister Chair, I move to approve the changes as presented for the town property use policy.
Okay, I have a second motion. A second, any further discussion? Thank you, team, for that. Hearing no further discussion, we'll bring this to the vote. Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. And for the record, that's three times that Jeff and Julie have agreed. I'm, I'm keeping score.
We appreciate that you're keeping score.
It's all good. She brings us up to the next item, item B. The action regarding the decision on Lions Club's events as town-sponsored events.
So Mister Chair, I move to approve considering the Templeton Lions Club events as town-sponsored events and for the town administrator to sign off on these events as per the use of town property policy.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? I just have one comment. I will direct this one to Sue. I'm looking at the letter that was presented. At the very bottom, it looks like, uh, you got caught by spell check. Templeton is misspelled. If there was an I thrown in at the end, it's Temple Shun. Sorry, I did proofread the package. We can fix it, that's easy.
You don't want to shut anybody.
No, 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 not at all.
Could we amend that to Templeton Lions Club? Because there are Lions Clubs in all different kind of communities.
They did say to.
It does say Templeton Lions. In the suggested motion.
Okay, I'm, I'm just looking at the agenda.
The agenda doesn't have it, but we're, yeah, the motion, but my motion.
Six A, the first one. It, it's an either or. It's quite right. Good catch, good catch. Any further discussion, please?
No, I corrected Jeff's song good.
Okay, hearing no further discussions, bring this to the vote. Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mister Curry?
I vote yes.
I vote yes as well. Thank you for that, team. Item C, I'm gonna yield back my time. The R A A C has not met, so I have no information to provide to the board. That brings us up to board member and administrator comments and any reports.
This Jim, if I may. I will just comment that, there's a list in the town clerk's office and I'll be checking it twice. Uh, tomorrow is the deadline.
Yeah.
For taking out nomination papers. There are many open spots. Some that are open from last year, failure to elect. If you're a resident and you question things or you go to town meeting, uh, you complain or you complain on Facebook or wherever, uh, whatever issue you may have, that's a reason in my mind to run, to take out papers. You still. Whatever issue you may have, that's a reason in my mind to run, to take out papers, you still have. Time. To take out your papers and walk around and get your thirty-two signatures of town-registered voters, it's an opportunity. And yes, I am a volunteer, the Board of Selectmen are volunteers. A few may collect a couple extra bucks for it, but nonetheless, we are volunteers, like all the other boards and committees. But that's your chance. If you don't like how things go on many different fronts. There are a lot of open seats, including two on the Board of Selectmen, planning board, cemetery, just. Go to town clerk's office, pull your papers, go get your signatures, and sit at the table and join the fun. If you complain, now's your chance, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Parents with the young adults or older adults living at home, or, you know, mention it to them, we need the younger generation's perspective. Be nice to see more people step up that are in their twenties and.
I'm upset.
Thank you. Mr. Curry, any comments, sir?
No, I'm good, thanks for everyone putting up with me in an airport.
No, thank you for joining us remotely.
Increase your tech budget.
Safe travels, sir.
And I, I, I should have said I did pull papers, so, Benedict, you want to run against me to people and all that? Please do.
Thank you for that, I have no comments to add tonight as well. Okay, that brings us up to action, item eight, adjournment.
I motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Ms. Griffiths?
Yes.
Ms. Richards?
Yes.
Mr. Curry?
I vote yes.
I vote yes as well.
Safe travels, Mike.
Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.
On PM.